About we want the.
Well, I don't like to go here because. No, but I know I've never spent any time around. They aren't working well. I'm not here for the. I mean, it's one of the.
Okay.
Okay. Um. I mean, I see. It's a movie that's like. But I was.
It's a. How do you say? Don't say cliff. Doctorate of law and after from the tree lots. Shoulder, shoulder. But. Thank you. You gotta screw this one. They got them all. Probably do either. Or higher now. All right. I'm not gonna rush you. Not with the honor or whatever. Whenever you see me hit that button.
You know, if you're watching. Very closely.
All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, February thirteenth to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Council, next up on our agenda is the Agenda Review and Adoption. Who would look for a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Uh, no one signed up for open forum public comment tonight? Uh, next we have approval of city council minutes from the January twenty-third regular council meeting. I'll take a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, consent agenda items. We have items A through G tonight. Take a motion, or is there any that would, uh, warrant further discussion?
I'll move A through G.
We have a motion to approve A through G.
I'll second that motion.
There's a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Onto old business. Trail gaps, plan, approval and authorized bids.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Um, for your consideration tonight is the plan approval and authorization for bidding on the Trail Gaps Project. Uh, the Trail Gaps Project includes four different locations within the city. These four locations were identified as priority gaps within the city's current trail and sidewalk system. The city did receive a, uh, transportation alternative grant through the APO to help complete these, uh, projects. The four locations look include Twelfth Street North between Riverside Avenue and Fourth Avenue North. Seventh Street North between Riverside Avenue and Second Avenue North. Third Street North between Nineteenth Avenue and then just west of Twentieth Avenue North. And then Thirteenth Avenue, uh, just north of Grizzly Lane. There's, um, one block and I'll kind of highlight these a little bit more. Um, here's Third Street North. So the proposed sidewalk is located on the south side of Third Street North. Um, it connects to an existing sidewalk on Third Street North. The entire length of Third Street North is just over a half a mile long. This is the only missing section. Um, it's about nine hundred and fifty feet. Uh, so it ties into that existing sidewalk and then, um, west of Twentieth Avenue and then connects to the regional trail along Nineteenth Avenue North. Uh, it includes a six-foot wide sidewalk and then a boulevard that varies between zero feet and six feet. Um, the reason why it varies is to tie into the existing grades and to tie into the existing driveways. Uh, the next location is Thirteenth Avenue North. This one is about a hundred and seventy feet. It ties into an existing sidewalk. Uh, just north of Grizzly Lane and Thirteenth Avenue intersection, um, goes across one property, um, where that gap is and then, um, includes a crosswalk then again across Grizzly at Thirteenth Avenue. Again, this includes a, a six-foot sidewalk, uh, no boulevard at this location due to grades. Uh, we are also doing a curb cut. This is one of the areas that flooded significantly, um, in the recent years, and so we're doing a curb cut and a little bit of grading to help lower that flooding, um, as much as we can in that area. Uh, Twelfth Street North, um, this length is, uh, about nine hundred and fifty feet. It'll pick up where the County Road One Trail ends and fills in the gap between County Road One and Fourth Avenue North. Um, going further west, there is an existing regional trail that travels the rest of the way along Twelfth Avenue North. Um, again, a six-foot sidewalk, no boulevard proposed at this location, uh, mainly due to the, uh, driveways that are located there and the grades that we need to tie into. Uh, the last location is Seventh Street North, um, again tying in to where the County Road One Trail and Crosswalk is, um, six-foot sidewalk and no boulevard. Uh, again, because of the, the steepness of those driveways and having to tie into those grades. Um, and then this carries to the west of the, um, business complex that's there. The sidewalk ends at that west entrance, um, and continues then, uh, west. Mid, or I guess that Second Avenue North is an existing crosswalk, uh, that was put in with a safe routes to school, uh, so we'll tie into that existing, um, crossing at that location. Estimated project costs, um, soft costs are estimated at just under eighty thousand dollars. Construction estimate for the four locations is about four hundred and eighty thousand, um, including a, a five con- percent contingency for construction. Brings a total project cost at about five hundred and eighty-two thousand. Uh, as I mentioned, the city did receive a grant for three hundred and sixty-seven, two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, uh, for that alternative, transportation alternatives, uh, grant. The remaining, uh, project costs would come from, uh, the street fund. Rob, correct me if that's inaccurate. Um, so that's the project schedule. So, um, pending plan approval and authorization to bid tonight, it is, uh, that grant is federally funded, so we're, we're waiting for an official bid date, um, from that review agency. Uh, but planning to bid in March, award the project in April with a summer construction and a final completion, uh, in October of this year. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, what questions do you have on the project? Yes, um, I'll start. Uh, a couple of questions I have. I caught it on the last slide and I apologize, didn't recognize earlier. Um, did I see on the Seventh Street that we're only doing a sidewalk and not a patuminous trail? Is that accurate?
Correct. It's a six-foot wide sidewalk.
Um. If it's adjoining, I, I guess, help us, talk us through the decision on that versus, uh, the eight-foot bike path that it kind of connects between.
Absolutely. So on the north side of Seventh Street North, going up the hill to the west is all sidewalk. But the main reason that's a six-foot wide sidewalk and not a patuminous trail is because of the steepness of those driveways. So in order to meet ADA grades, that trail or sidewalk has to be at a maximum two percent cross slope. If you keep it a patuminous trail, the minimum width is eight feet, and if we did that, those driveways got extremely steep. We are already getting temporary easements from those property owners to replace their driveways all the way back to where their garage is. Um, and the driveways would get too steep if you went that extra two feet at that flatter two percent slope.
Okay. And there wasn't an option to go on the s- I thought we talked about this, but maybe not. There wasn't an option to go on the south side of Seventh Street to then keep the patuminous?
The reason we didn't go on the south side of Seventh is because when we looked at the crosswalk location, when we did County Road One, we wanted to put that, um, median in the roadway as a safe oasis for pedestrians when they were crossing. On the south side of Seventh, you've got the left turn lane, um, which then created that oasis, that island and oasis for the, uh, pedestrians to cross on the north side, which is why we kept it on the north side.
Is the Twelfth Street, is that patuminous connecting?
Nope, that is also a sidewalk. Again, because of the grades and the limited, um, space within that right-of-way, um, it was proposed at a s- or is proposed at a six-foot sidewalk abutting the curb and gutter.
Cause that one has less grade than Seventh Street, right? I mean, that's, could we achieve it at eight foot or no? Or we absolutely can't?
Um. It would be difficult. We're getting, you're right, it is a lot flatter than, than Seventh. Um, we're getting one temporary easement from the property right at the corner of Twelfth and, uh, Riverside Avenue. To go to a, uh, minimum eight-foot trail, you would likely need easements from every single one of those property owners, which with the federal money can be a, a lengthy process with having to get a number of appraisals if property owners aren't willing to sign off. Um, additional conflicts come into place if you go to an eight-foot trail. Uh, you have to have two, two feet minimum separation from any other conflict, so by going with the six-foot sidewalk, we're avoiding having to relocate a number of power poles. Um, we are relocating, uh, one or two hydrants. Uh, so we're trying to avoid as many conflicts as possible and limit the number of easements we needed.
I guess the bigger, council, the bigger thing for the, I'm considering on this or thinking through on this is, um, you know, the conversation continues to be had of our patuminous trails and who plows them in the winter and what does that look like, right? How do we maintain them if our, if we're supporting as a walking, active community and we want those trails open? You know, these two in particular are six-foot, which I can't imagine a plow truck's able to support. Um. I don't know. It sounds like Seventh Street, we don't have much of an option. Uh, Twelfth is maybe an option, but we're probably too far down the path at this point to make a deviation.
Twelfth would be no different than Fifteenth Street North. The homeowner would take care of it. It's a sidewalk.
Um.
We have lots of them, or are we taking care of that one? Sorry, April.
No, that's okay. Um, it's been a while since we talked about it. We did talk about this one potentially being plowed by the city because it's more of the regional route and it butts that trail.
And it butts up the curb.
Um, if we are concerned about the weight of snow removal equipment, um, we can at this point increase the thickness of the concrete or the gravel underneath it.
Well, I'm even just thinking, the width-wise is gonna be the.
Width-wise, it'll be a blower, but it'll probably be a, it would have been a blower anyway because it's on back of curb and it's gonna be really heavy because of the snow, you know, everything comes off the road on there, so.
Our, our first, um, when we first started looking at the design of this, our first choice was paved trails. Um, but once we started getting to the design, just with the, um, grade limitations and distance limitations and conflicts we ran into, um, we felt that the six-foot concrete sidewalk was the best option.
Okay. Um, a note on sprinklers and turf. I know council heard from some constituents today, um, concerned about that. Uh, is that, is restoration of turf and sprinklers planned for this, for all four routes, or?
Uh, it is. We do have a separate bid item for sprinkler systems, which includes salvaging and replacing, um, the sprinkler system on a per lot basis. So if a sprinkler system is encountered during construction, it will get restored with the project. Same thing with, um, turf establishment.
Council, any questions?
Can you, uh, April, look at the Third Street North connector too? And that is proposed to be sidewalk six-foot also?
Correct. And that does match what the existing sidewalk is to the west and running the entire length of Third Street North.
And so then it connects all the way just past? Just pa- uh, is it after Twentieth that it connects, or is it before, or somewhere in there?
It's just to the west of Twentieth, so a little bit
Okay.
Further is where the current sidewalk dead ends.
I know we heard from somebody regarding that sidewalk as well and, um, I think well, it, just wanted to clarify the, where it was connecting.
Yeah, I think we, we, council in front of you have a petition, um, from I believe every property owner on the south side of Third Street that's directly impacted by this. And, uh, to council member Smith's point, I, I understand that. As I look at this map in front of us, if we were to, on Third Street, place the new trail on the north side, it would then force a, uh, another crosswalk across Third Street in order to connect to the existing trail, which from a safety perspective, um, we've got to consider and also, you know, the impact there. It certainly is one of those things. I think as we fill in the rest of these sidewalks that are missing pieces, we're gonna continue to run into this of if everyone wants a sidewalk, just not on my side of the street, and I can absolutely appreciate and understand that. One more on Grizzly.
Yeah.
Um, I noticed on the south side of Grizzly, we're adding that little pad. Um, but there's no sidewalk there. Is that more of a safe harbor? Or what's the intent of that?
Um, it's absolutely a safe harbor and it's a requirement of the ADA, uh, standards. So anytime you have a crosswalk, you need to have a safe landing on the opposite side of the roadway. The thought being if you have somebody in a wheelchair who has, struggles to, um, with mobility, they have a safe place to get off the roadway once they reach that destination and then determine where they're gonna go.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Seeing none, would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve and authorize bids. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item carries. Onto public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. The first is the variance of three fifteen Sartell Street West.
Mayor and members of the council, before you is a variance request. Um, like you stated, three fifteen Sartell Street West. Um, most of you are aware we did rezone this property, uh, last year in December from B two general business to R one single-family residential. The applicant is seeking a variance for a zero-foot rear yard setback against the fifty-foot shoreline setback on this property. The standard setback for R one single-family residential is thirty feet, so this would be going from thirty to zero against that fifty-foot shoreline setback. This variance request allows a property to be developed with a single-family residential home on this. Um, this variance request meets all the findings of fact to be able to prove the variance specifically that the plight of landowners due to circumstances that are unique to the property. Um, Rob, if you go to the next item, please, on the next page. Um, on your screens and before you, I put a certificate of survey, uh, on this. You can see that this is near the Watt Tab River in the rear of the property. So this is very unique. Um, at staff level discussion, we've discussed how a single-family residential home is probably the best option for development on this property. We did have an environmentally sensitive area meeting that we conducted this year to review and discuss how to support this variance request and allow this property to be developed with a single-family residential home. With that, um, I'll take any questions that you may have. As you see on the screen, I have identified the fifty-foot shoreline setback on the property for the house and garage.
Thank you. Council, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions for staff? Alex?
Yeah, either Kerry or John, whoever know best. Do we know, uh, rain flood situations like last year? How far up does that generally go back there? Do we have any idea or experience?
No, it never, never gets up. I've never seen it that high.
Right, as I figure. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the variance request for three fifteen Sartell Street West, please step to the podium. Second request, anyone wishing to testify? Third and final request, anyone wishing to testify on three fifteen Sartell Street West? We'll close the public hearing. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the variance request. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the variance request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries. Second public hearing tonight is the vacation of Whipper World Way.
Mayor, councilman for you, um, I've identified where the vacation is proposed. I also put on your spot the easement vacation drawing as well. Um, the applicant has requested to vacate the, and we would look to be, um, classified services out of the application, um, to allow lot lines to be adjusted for future single-family residential homes. This, uh, the applicant submitted a minor subdivision application to allow those lot line modifications. This request is simply, as you can see there, there's four lots currently. This request would change the four lots to three lots, um, just due to being able to sell these properties, um, and give the move for single-family residential homes that applicant just has not, um, had great options for building up those small lots as of the way it was. Um, some things of note is that once the developer submits building plans, at that time we need to address, um, any issues that remain, um, with the driveway increments that you see, they would have to address those, um, and also the current utilities that are in place. This was actually, all the utilities you see there, it was supposed to be seven twin home type of style lots there, then it was changed to four, now three, so they would have to address those utilities, um, at the time that they put in for building permits. And then let us know and identify what utilities will remain in place. After this vacation, the applicant has proposed to then put new drainage and utility easements that accommodate the three lots and stuff.
Okay.
That I would take any questions that you may have as well.
Council, any questions for Kerry before the public hearing? Uh, just validating your last point, that was gonna be my question, is we're removing the, um, easement drainage, utility easements now prior to granting a building permit, or what is that? Um, kind of check and balance to ensure that we're placing the utility easement back on?
Um, yeah, so after, once this would be confirmed, then they would record the easements at the same time and submit it at the same time, um, so that they're recorded against the properties.
Okay.
The applicant has addressed and it has initiated a request of no string until.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify the vacation of utility and drainage easements along Whipper World Way, please step forward.
What was that?
Whip. Thanks, Tim. I was really working hard on it, too. Second request for the utility and drainage easement.
Feel like you should take the third request here.
Third and final request, anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of utility and drainage easements along Whipper World Way? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any questions, any discussion?
So we're going with a density change, so it's actually three versus four homes that will be in there eventually?
Think it's three versus potentially would, would have been seven, right?
Wow, okay, that.
If no further discussion, I would look for a motion on it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You wanna state the address?
Whipper Will. Way.
We have a motion, is there a second? So motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Third and final public hearing is on conditional use permit and vacation of easement.
Mayor and members of the council, before you, this conditional use permit and vacation request by J K Development. This applicant applied for a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of self storage facilities in B2 general business district that um the properties were zoned as. As stated within um our zoning code, it is a conditional use permit or CUP is required for self storage facilities. The applicant is proposing the construction and operation of five self storage buildings on the property. On your screens, you see that I've identified lot properties, the applicant is proposing to make that one lot. Within our um zoning ordinance, some of the other requirements for self storage facilities is um lighting requirements, storage requirements, meaning that um it can only be operated as storage facilities. You cannot store outdoor storage of any kind as well, and then all other B2 general zoning standards would apply. The surrounding properties, as you can see, the red is B2 general business district, um and the light gray you see is light industrial as well for zoning. This development is still, as proposed, is subject to full site plan review and approval from C staff and engineering. This would occur after the CUP and vacation requests are, if they are approved. The applicant is also working on re- having the property to facilitate the specific development. As I stated before, this isn't to follow through the conditional use permit application and a vacation request. They're proposing to vacate the drainage utility easements between lots five and six to combine it into one lot. The applicant is also requesting to vacate accessory away from an old um Minnesota DOT flat as well. It was turned back over to the city um along the northern boundary of the property for lot six. As stated, this, this request would help facilitate the development of these properties, um, these self storage facilities. I have put on your spots that the site plan, as proposed, has been submitted with the CUP identifies the buildings for self storage facilities. With that, I will take any questions that you may have regarding the vacation and the. The applicant um has a part here as well that can answer specific, specific things about the conditional use permit or whether proposing as well. So with that, I'll take any questions and I might just.
Council, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the conditional use permit and vacation of utility and drainage easement, please step forward. Second request, anyone wishing to testify? Third and final, anyone wishing to testify? We will close the public hearing. Council, any questions or discussion? Tim?
Uh, just a quick question on, on setbacks and, and of those buildings. I know that we just built one down on 19th and County Road Four. I just wanted to make sure that we're complying to the crowding of a site, uh, make sure that it's not feeling like it's right up against the road or anything like that.
Absolutely. Um, this as proposed is meeting all the setback requirements. The specific storage facility that you're referencing had some unique, um, how do I phrase it, decisions that were made um with, during site plan.
Well done.
Approval. Um, so this as proposed is meeting all the setbacks and exceeding them as well. This is also meeting the green space requirement. There was um some, some things that happened on other storage facilities where they were at the exact max for impervious, impervious surfaces. This is actually under that maximum by a decent amount. Um, the applicant is also proposing to make this more of a uh self storage facility that is, I don't wanna say higher end, but different than we see on 19th and County Road Four. Um, that will be enclosed, of course, but um also heated and just using some different design elements to make it not what we are used to seeing on 19th and Fourth. So I think this, this is a great um option as proposed and will really offer maybe even more traffic and development opportunities to spur in that area, just with more traffic and things like that and businesses around there as well. So to answer your question, yes, it is meeting all the setback requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And for verification, um, I think one of the challenges of other sites is that on both sides of the building, you've got access doors. What I'm seeing here is that the access doors to storage is really confined to the center with fencing around it.
Correct.
Which I definitely, from a curb appeal perspective, on that major corridor for us will, will be a positive.
Yeah.
Um, do we know any type of screening? Uh, I guess it'd be on the um south end of that. I know there's a filtr- filtration swale there. Um, do we have any requirements on the screening?
Um, since the surrounding properties are zoned B2 and light industrial, there's no screening requirements as if it would be next to residential. So um, they do have to meet landscaping requirements. And I, I haven't seen their landscape plan, but I fully in uh think that they'll meet all those requirements and the applicant is wanting to make this more of a place that people will obviously want to use the storage facilities, but also like be proud of where they're storing their things. And just, I think that this as proposed will just really enhance the area because um as you can see on your screen, it's pretty vacant and bare over there. So if anything, this'll create some better landscaping for even the surrounding properties, just because it is so vacant over there.
What do we require from a landscape plan? Like on the screen, I'm, I'm seeing along that corridor, they've got evergreens planted every maybe twenty feet. Um, are those a requirement in, in the B2 or?
Yeah, there's a minimum requirement um for trees as well as shrubbery, as well as types of trees. So they have to meet the certain percentage of that um as well. For shrubbery and trees, there's also requirements for the type of fence that can be around it and the color of the fence um as well. So they will have to meet all those requirements for planting and landscaping at the site plan review process.
Kerry, the access is off of that unnamed road, is that right?
It, it's a private road.
Private road?
Yep.
And that's existing road?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One more follow-up question there?
Yeah.
Has Pete, you've reviewed it and as far as fire and getting around on either side of it, since we have had some history with storage containers?
Yeah, yeah, there is a, Fire Marshal did a full review on this and there is gonna actually be a secondary access with the building or uh gate keys on the south end of it, right near the curb. And that's where the additional hydrant will be, right in that area, so we have access for that.
I guess um my ask, and I don't know that I want it part of the CUP conditional use, but um if we can really work with them on, on the landscape, that uh, I absolutely agree that it's not visually appealing today. And I, I love the intent of what they're planning to build here, but intent doesn't always end up coming out in the product, and so I just, I hope that we don't end up seeing a a site that we've uh, we've run into in other places with storage units um and wishing we had done or put more restrictions on.
Agreed.
Absolutely, and I, I think just with um how familiar we are with sites and what we don't want to necessarily see, I think it's um important to highlight that, that'll always be something that we don't want to happen again, especially from a staff review level, when the site, full site plan does get submitted, that um they will need to adhere to all the zoning um codes. And that is something that even the applicant um is wanting to make sure that it's visually appealing for them as well and just driving more business for them, um, that people are proud to go to their storage facility, um, and it looks nice, things like that. So I, I fully in think that the applicant intends to make this area appealing, visually appealing with landscaping and things like that.
Great. And I know Mr. Delia will carry that forward to his client as well, so.
I don't think we'd be disappointed in the, I mean, your landscaping requirements, the vegetation that you can see under the number of trees and number of shrubs meets the, that's the minimal for your, your ordinance, so your ordinance is really the driver here as far as quantity. And so I, I did that to make sure that it was fit. I've done these before where they had such a large quantity required, you couldn't fit all there. That's nice balance, and he does want to spend some money on landscaping, doesn't want to make this one very, very large.
Good.
Is that not the front entrance to our city right there? Is that the edge?
Yep.
So are we planning a sign on that corner at all down the road? Can't remember.
Looks like we have an eighty-four hundred square foot uh billboard we could put there.
Right.
It may be an option. I mean, we talked about that in early stages of partnering with the city for.
We appreciate that and didn't want you to come here for nothing, so. Council, any other discussion?
I'm just dying to know what the media room is.
Um, for security, yeah, that's why I said it's a big thing. The security system.
Okay.
Got it. Thanks.
Council, I'll look for a motion on the conditional use and uh vacation of easement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Moving on to department reports. First up is Public Works and Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, you have our report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Public Works or Engineering?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Is your new storage building up and operational yet?
Yes, it is.
How's that space working out for you?
Good, we're just kinda getting things moved in, some shelving and stuff, so we're getting some rearranging done, but it, it'll work good.
Excellent, good. Thank you. Uh, Fire?
Mayor, members of council, in front of you have monthly report for Fire. Would like to highlight one area. As you notice, uh, you guys have voted for and approved funding for the Police and Fire Peer Support Group. Just wanna really thank you for that. It was, it was used after a pretty rough fire that we had recently. Just to have those pieces in place early were huge. Uh, I know our members were extremely thankful that we had that. We, otherwise it takes a lot more time to get these things moving. It's kinda funny, after following up with that, I also got a letter from League of Minnesota Cities and they just kinda, they're pushing departments to start thinking this way, and we're already steps ahead. But a couple of things that jumped out at me, it says that um cities that have wellness programs such as this typically save more than fifty thousand dollars in three years on the average of this, um, for PTSD claims and everything else. So um, not only is it an awesome thing first and foremost for the health of our police and fire, but financially, there's, there's actually a, there's, there's good numbers that support this program. So just wanna thank the city for, for doing this.
Awesome. Any questions, comments for Chief? Thank you. PD? Mayor, members of the council, you have our monthly report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask or answer them. Any questions for police? Perfect, thank you. Uh, council, we will go into commission updates.
Not at this time.
Uh, city council committee updates and miscellaneous business. Tim?
Nothing today.
Jill?
Nothing.
Alex? Jed, what do you have for us?
I got nothing for you tonight.
Nothing tonight. I have nothing as well, so look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.